All right, um, six twenty, apologies for being a little bit late. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, this is a added meeting, primary focus of working on the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. Um, as previously agreed upon, we will have a fifteen-minute public comment section before we get moving. And so, get the timer out, same rules as always. And if there is anybody attendance that wants to speak, right ahead. Yep, go ahead, um, just give us your name and town. Yeah, and if you could, it's kind of a pain, but you gotta get like really close or they can't hear you on the thing.
Of course. Okay, so once again, my name's Shannon Gardner, and I'm from the town of Epsom. Uh, so I'm here today to advocate, obviously, for the removal of the mask mandate. I do think it should be something for parental or guardian choice. I do think currently that the town, as well as the county and the state numbers, as well as school numbers, does not reflect the need or requirement for universal masking. I think it should be up to the student to decide what fits best for them. Um, currently, and just looking on my phone right now to see the current numbers for, you know, Pembroke Academy, you have seven listed as of today, eleven thirty, uh, for confirmed cases. And clearly, those are students or faculty that are no longer at the school. Um, so with the seven cases in, I'm just Googling this right now, and I could be inaccurate with the count of students. But from the count that I saw, it was seven hundred and sixty-three students. So seven represents less than one percent of the school being currently affected. It's actually zero point nine one percent. So I feel like something like that shouldn't affect everybody inside of the school. Um, currently at Epsom, today we did our vaccination clinic. Uh, myself, I didn't feel safe sending my children to school today. I think there's several parents that feel in the same boat as me, and it's okay if you feel different. But I think that parents should have that choice over what happens to their kid. Unfortunately, if you're in situations like I myself am, I'm in a split parenting situation. If both parents aren't on board to homeschool and I'm forced to send my kid to a public school, I'm forced to do whatever the school tells me to do. So that's why I'm just saying, if you can please start to just open your minds more than what you already have. Parents like me that are kind of just stuck that we don't get a choice to homeschool, and we have to go to public school, we want to have still that choice over our child, that whatever we deem as safe can be happening for our kid. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Um, so again, the major reason for the meeting tonight is to get in an extra session, um, to work on our budget. Uh, I did just get notification that Ms. Manzelli is not gonna be able to join us. Um, and I was notified today that Ms. Bond's not gonna be able to join us tonight or for the next two meetings. So we'll work with what we have. Um, and I will turn it over at this time to Superintendent Sherman to give us an update on where we're at.
Thank you. So I'm going to review the budget changes that Amber made as a result of your last meeting, and then, um, we'll pause and see if anyone has any follow-up questions. Everyone takes out their budget package. We're looking for the first yellow, which is on page seven. So I noticed when I was doing a review that, um, Josh's IT letter, when he talked about the wireless access points, um, and the NAS backup devices, um, he indicated that we would be responsible for half the cost and that our E-rate funds would cover the other half. We had the full amount budgeted in two of our schools instead of the half. So we were able to cut those, um, a little bit for each, um, of the two schools. I think Hill had the correct amount in there, but the other two had, um, they had extra, so we cut that out. In the twelve-hundred section, beginning on page fourteen, um, Karen did provide some notes for special education. I, um, attached a document in your handout, but Amber did have some time to go back in and add notes into the twelve-hundred section to, um, based upon Karen's sheet that she did, so hopefully that has more detail for people. And the next section on page twenty-three again was a note that Karen provided, um, because those lines are, um, related to special education as well. So that those two pages have some notes highlighted in yellow. The next change that's highlighted is on page forty-two. Um, we changed the numbers for the bus contract. I think we've mentioned, um, at other meetings that we have been operating with less than a full fleet for this year. And the principals did note that when we got up to six buses, the students were getting to school on time. I think we're currently operating with seven. We have eight in our budget. So we spoke to Dale Transportation, and I asked them if they thought there was any way that they could make it work with six buses. Um, and they felt like they could do that, that they'd redone some res- some routes as a result of COVID and are, um, pretty confident that we can make it with six buses, so we've cut two buses out of the budget. The next change is on page forty-five, and that is under the separation benefit. Um, we still have some time that they're due by tomorrow, and we've just randomly stuck in a couple of salaries. Your, um, CBA requires you to fund at least three of those every year. So we do have three people, um, entered into that just to help us with the bottom line. And then, um, we could get another one tomorrow, and that person may bump someone that's already submitted. So we'll just have to see what comes in tomorrow, but at least we have some numbers that will be close, um, that are entered prior to that December first deadline. Um, at the bottom of page forty-five, Amber did put in the pooled increases as requested at the last meeting. And that goes on to the next page as well. They're all pooled. And Amber was able to work on the, um, food service budget. And right now, the transfer, um, to food services estimated at eighty-eight thousand two ninety-one, so that number has been adjusted. And then the food service budget itself was completed, and that's at the bottom of page forty-seven, um, highlighted in yellow. That's the full, um, amount of the food service budget. And then, um, just to jump ahead a little bit, before we do questions, the food service budget is the next, um, piece in your handout. Um, and then the special education notes that, um, I referred to that Karen completed, and then our enrollment projections for when we get to that conversation. So that's what makes up your packet. Um, and I'll just stop here to see if there are questions before we move on.
Thank you. Um, I've got a couple, but anybody else? Will you go first? Uh, okay, so the buses, um, that sounds good. Is that going to have us so close that if, you know, the number of parents that are doing drop-off changes significantly, is that, are we gonna be too close? And if we are, I mean, if that did happen, can we ask for another bus mid-year if that's not what we, you know, contracted for?
I think that's something we would, um, need to put in our RFP when that goes out. Um, you know, we could put six buses, potentially seven, um, and then get the bid and work that into the contract when contact time came. I would look to I would look to Wendy and John maybe, and they could let us know what the buses look like in terms of capacity when they drop off students. Does it appear that there are more seats that could be filled? Or is it pretty tight with six buses?
Uh, it really depends on the bus. You know, I've got one bus, I think, has got, um, maybe twelve kids from Three Rivers. I've got another bus that's got over forty. Um, and that changes frankly year to year depending on where the pickups are. So I feel like the ones that've got, you know, a dozen, you know, I don't know where they all live, but it feels like that could be dispersed differently, uh, maybe not. Um, so I think there's two buses, two or maybe three that are pretty full. And the other ones, just from the Three Rivers perspective, is, you know, you got one with about a dozen, you got another with about thirty on it. Um, and if I had to guess, it's gonna be mirror much like, uh, yeah, it would be at the Hill School. Thank you.
My understanding is I think there's one bus that's at like absolute max capacity right now, and others have additional seats. So I think they'd be looking at routes, um, we can get, we can, you know, get more specifics, that might help. But I think with six, we, there was a pretty good, we were getting the kids on time and there was space on the bus.
Okay, I mean, I'm, if we can save that money, I'm definitely all for it. Um, and if you think we can get some of that language in the RFP, that would make me more comfortable. I would just hate to see, you know, I think a lot of, especially with the way last year went, I think a lot of parents have gotten in the habit of dropping off, and I think our drop-offs have gotten more efficient, which is great too. Um, I just wouldn't want to ride too close to that line than not have the choice of something, you know, if we needed them.
Yeah, that's, uh, we had that conversation. That was my concern as well, that, you know, how many people are dropping off that may change in the future, um, back to a bus rider.
And then the other one I wrote down just now was, um, you mentioned the pooled increases. Um, was that, do you remember what percent that was done at?
Three.
Great, okay. And then, if I can, it'll take me a minute, I've got some questions from, that I wrote down from last time. Oh. The transfer to food service, uh, can you just explain that? I, I think I have my head wrapped around it, because I've done this a couple of years, but if you could explain that for everybody, I think it'd be helpful.
So the food service budget, um, is developed with, obviously, the food service director and, um, my office, Amber's currently serving, um, as the director at the SAU level. And basically, you develop the budget, um, you look at the revenue for sales, and expected revenue for sales, um, cost of meals, supplies. And then the budget has to be balanced. So if using the staff and benefits, um, that to run the lunch program are going to cause a deficit, then the transfer has to come out of the Fund One budget, so that budget has to balance out. So there's an eighty-eight thousand dollar transfer, um, anticipated for this next fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, I can't remember if I have any other ones marked here from one through this this past week. But, uh, if you guys have anything, jump in, otherwise I'll keep looking. Oh, um, I think I know the answer to this one already, but I ju- I noticed in, like in the nine seventy-five area, um, admin contracts, it jumped out at me at first that, uh, at Hill-
What's your account line?
So, uh, I'm looking at nine seventy-eight, I'm sorry, yeah, nine seventy-eight. Oh, I don't know. It's, uh, it's twenty-four-ten, one thirteen, I'm sorry, one-twelve.
An administrative salary line?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm mortal just saying this for public consumption. It jumped out at me when I was looking at these, the assistant principal salary at, at Hill and the assistant principal salary at PRS are very similar, and then the one at, um, PA is like double that, and then I realized that's because there's two, right?
There, yes, there are multiple administrators at Pembroke Academy, correct?
That makes sense. Oh, I had, um, this is twenty-six, twenty-four, eleven, three oh six. Um, there's a significant increase in water and sewer. And I wasn't sure if that's just, if there was an increase from the town for those costs or why that would be.
I will have to talk to Mr. Cofflin about that. So it's water and sewer?
Yep, um, the line on the one from last week is eleven forty. The account code is oh oh one, twenty-six, twenty, four eleven, three oh six. That, um, top on page, top of page thirty-nine on last week's handout. Now, now that I'm looking at it closer, the proposed for next year is in line with, um, actuals from before. It looks like we voted in a very small amount last year, and I'm wondering if there was, if there was some COVID money that-
Yeah, I'm not sure. I just noticed that myself. It's been in the nine thousand dollar, or actuals were ninety-two. Let me, I'll check on that. I'm wondering if the forty-eight, eighty-one from the line before accidentally got put in there twice.
Okay.
I'll check on that.
Um, and then I was wondering, maybe, I'm not sure, we don't have Mr. Cofflin today, I'm not sure if you'll know this off the top of your head. Um, same page, line eleven fifty-nine, eleven sixty, um, no increase in the contract for the natural gas and the wood chips. I was just wondering if you have any idea how long that contract lasts, like when, when are we gonna expect a new price on that stuff?
I will ask him about that. That, he usually does the estimate based on what we've used in the past, and I, I have a feeling, um, it was difficult to put this number together, uh, given the fact that we were not in session the entire year last year. Um, so we voted twenty-nine the year before, spent twenty-two actual, and then spent twenty-three actual. So I'm wondering if he just le- level funded it, but I will double check with him and make sure.
Okay. I think that's all that I had highlighted for now. You guys got anything?
Um, as I was going through, um, the budget cuts, uh, that were in the drive, a couple of things, questions, I hadn't had this new one yet, and I didn't correlate it back.
Patty's gonna go through those in a little bit.
Oh, okay.
I think we're almost there, but if there's any other questions on just the overall budget?
I have a quick question. For the modular costs, the annual modular cost, it says thirty thousand eight eighty-eight. Do we have like a multi-year contract that, when is that? Um, it's five years.
So I, I think, mm, this year is year three, so the budget we're looking at is for the fourth year.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're locked in for five.
Okay, thank you.
And I did, the question that I have on that, and I hope it doesn't come to it, is if we have to extend, can we extend by a year, you know, by two years, like whatever. Um, but that's something that we need to get on top of too soon. Anything else on this? You're doing cut sheet next?
Sure.
So we got together as an administrative team, um, and went through the budget line by line to see if we, uh, could find some places that we could make some adjustments. In lots of places, um, we recommended level funding and also recommended an alternative source, um, to fund those lines. So, um, you know, any basically initiatives or new things or increases, we put back to the, uh, current voted amount so that it would be a zero increase at this point. Um, for instance, the second line down, supplies, foreign language, um, there, it was decreased by two hundred and fifty dollars. So there's some that are small, that we're hoping as we get towards May, that if we have excess funds, those are things that we could purchase from this fiscal year and would be, you know, that way we would cover the cut, um, that we would make now to lower the budget. Um, some of it is, um, just cuts, and that's where you'll see a cut on the far right column. Some of the items we are recommending, um, that we could put in the new S R three grant that we just received. Um, we're still working on our spending plan for that, um, based upon the results of the survey. But we felt confident that those are some things that we thought the COVID funds would cover. It's done by school, so it's Pembroke Academy, Pembroke Hill, and Three Rivers. Um, and like I said, a lot of it is, um, books and equipment and, um, smaller things that, that we're hoping to transfer. Um, the forty-four thousand five hundred, um, replacement computers were, um, probably one of the biggest chunks at Pembroke Academy to use the S R three grant for. Uh, I'm not sure if there's anything else that really stands out. Um, some workshop funds that we don't think are gonna be used at Hill School, so that's, that's a straight cut. Um, we did review special education costs and, um, took out a couple of items that as time goes along and we get to know students better, we're feeling more comfortable about what needs they have, and, um, we did lower a couple of lines for special education. Um, and then for Three Rivers School, again, that replacement computer line, um, was a, was a larger cut, and that was twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's, we're gonna, uh, recommend using the S R grant for that. Um, several things that Three Rivers are going to the S R grant that you can see on the far right. So we included the, um, the current number that we had in the budget, um, the new number that we would propose, and how much the decrease is, and what the funding source would be. Um, what we didn't do was designate any funds to, um, I think the one item, or I should say, one thing, um, the infrastructure line at Pembroke Academy, the very first item. Um, we did mention the technology trust fund, and that's a conversation the board needs to have about utilizing that, and do you want to cut from the budget and plan for it to be in the trust fund? Um, you know, the concern with that is if the, um, in March meeting, if that doesn't get approved, then you run the risk of not being able to replace your technology because you don't have the funds in the budget. So that's a conversation that all of you can have and make that decision. So I'll take questions on the cut sheet, and we would also be looking for, um, the board to give direction on, um, how you want to proceed with this.
Right, do you need to add questions? Oh.
So just to clarify, that these proposed cuts are not in the budget we received tonight.
That is correct. So the bottom line of what we came up with on the second page at the bottom is, uh, three hundred fifteen thousand six forty-eight. So if you felt like this was something you could support, we would then give this sheet to Amber and we would reduce the budget accordingly.
Uh, I, I guess the other, you know, we had talked about the replacement computers, and March meeting comes into play with this too, but the remainder of those funds after the S R, um, be put, are, are be, um, taken from the technology trust for those. I mean, that's something that, what, we're going on a five-year cycle or four-year cycle, right? On those, so kind of like police cars, fire trucks, those things, that we build it up. If we can take that out and put it on a warrant for March, that would do a lot to reducing the final number. Um, and I, I think that's something, uh, you know, whether it happens this year or not, but that's something in the future that will have to happen. If we're doing this every four years.
Yeah, and it, it may make sense to, um, fund the trust fund for a couple more years before you rely on the funding, because then we know if there's a year that the funding doesn't get voted on-
Right.
-to go into the fund, then we still have money in that trust fund to, uh, replace our equipment with, our computers.
That was my biggest, and, and I guess, I know I hate to sound like this, but the one thing that I was looking at from last week's budget to this, and haven't really delved into the new one yet, uh, something that kind of concerned me was the amount of money that we were proposing to spend on new music equipment. Um, I get it, I understand it, uh, you know, are we in the business of providing instruments for everybody? Um, whereas don't anybody shoot me, but when we're in school, all right? We, uh, we, if we were in band, or we went out and we rented that equipment. Now, I'm not opposed to maybe having a scholarship fund for certain students that may not be able to do that, that really want to do that. But this is something that, you know, it's, it's like any extracurricular. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that you have to put into it. Um, and I think putting it on the back of the taxpayers is kind of doing them a disservice, even though it's a, an extremely important part of the curriculum for these, for these students. So that's just where I'm, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on, on that.
I do. Um, you, I'll take the heat right off.
You, you got a good one.
You want somebody? Lots of people don't like me already, so I might as well say it. The thing that I noticed, and I guess it's similar line of thinking, um, but the thing that I don't see on a cut sheet, and maybe that's because we can't, you know, without being drastic, but without trying to make as many people mad as possible, um, you know, we do, we educate students here, right? Um, I don't see anything on here about reducing sports. I know that's a dirty word, um, but if it comes down to science equipment, you know, things that we really need, um, I would like to know if there's, you know, flexibility there without, you know, removing an entire sport. I, I don't know what the sports lines, you know, I don't know how much flexibility there is there, but it's definitely something that I would be interested in. It, it is, um, not our number one priority, I guess.
Did you want the principals to speak to that or answer any questions?
If you guys have information right now, I mean, I don't expect you to pull numbers out, but, um, you know, i- if you have a general idea of if there is, I know some sports are much more expensive than others, um, if you care to-
I think before Dan steps in, I think our, we had looked at this one year, and our, I think our entire co-curricular program in all of our schools was in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand. Does that sound like a real number? So it's, you know, we've talked about this in the past, that we could completely decimate every co-curricular offering that we have, and it, it's, it's not a big bang for your buck.
Yeah, that's, that's a good reference.
But it is a big bang for your buck when you're talking about, uh, giving kids opportunities after school. Um, you know, and we've had Sergeant Frost come and talk to us about the diversion, and, you know, the giving kids something to do after school is one of the best things you can do, so. It is, you know, and you're looking at supplies such as, okay, we won't buy baseballs and basketball, you know, it's, it's such small money per sport, um, when we've looked at it in the past. Certainly open to thoughts, and if the board wants us to take a harder look or has some suggestions, we're, you know, happy to do that.
I mean, even that is, is good context to know what that overall dollar amount is, because that does kind of show that it's a drop in the bucket, even if you went to the extreme. Um, I was just curious, if, if there's anything that you guys want to add, feel free.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll echo what Patty said. Um, not only is it a good value for the money, but that dollar amount hasn't changed for a number of years. So our stipend schedule for coaching and for advisors, um, has not changed for a while. So they haven't received raises, and, you know, um, and they continue to do an exemplary job. Uh, the other thing is that, uh, we're seeing a significant increase in social emotional needs with our students. And there is a lot of value from a social emotional perspective, from a community pride perspective, from pride of your school, uh, as well as, you know, having them in clubs and in sports here between three and five is critical for them when otherwise they could be making bad choices. Uh, you know, and what Sergeant Frost has said and what the research says is that those hours between three and five every day after school are really important. Uh, and if we have some opportunities that we can provide, that would, uh, give students better experience, uh, and avoid poor decision-making, then I think we need to, we need to try to do that.
Awesome, thank you. Um-
Do you have a quick question?
Yeah.
On this? So, because I'm having a little heart palpitations here, so fifty thousand, where's the first one?
What are you looking at? Are you looking at the cut sheet?
The special ed. It says trust if needed, but then on the next page, it says, it just says a cut, probably not gonna need fifty thousand dollar cut.
Sure.
Special placement.
Sure.
So is that special ed trust still there if we need that? Because that's a lot of, that's a hundred thousand.
It is, yes. I think we have close to four hundred thousand dollars in it.
Okay, so even though it just says, it just says cut, it doesn't mean that we can't.
Correct, so we're, and again, you know, as months go on in the school year and we get to know students better, we may have thought that a student needed more services, and now they're doing better than we thought, so we're, you know, it's, it's always-
Well, the wording being different, I just wanted to make sure they both kind of apply.
Yes, absolutely. If the, if the students need the services, we have to provide them, and if we run short in special ed, we can access the trust.
Yes. And then my other question is the seven thousand dollar cut to the sixth and eighth grade trips at, the field trips. Like, how burdensome is that going to be to those big field trips that all these kids look forward to all the way back in Hill School?
So that would be, sorry, I don't mean to step on toes, but, um- So that would be, sorry, I don't mean to step on toes, but that would be just keeping it, if I'm saying this, keeping it the way it is. So there was a proposed 7,000, yeah, there was, the increase is what they're getting rid of, right? Is that accurate?
Yeah, for the last couple of years, I've asked to help with the transportation costs for the sixth grade trip and the eighth grade trip. As you know, those don't go down. And that was one way we've, I felt we could help support, you know, the overall costs of those programs. Taking those out, it doesn't change the needle. Everybody, people just pay that cost out of pocket.
Shane, Dan?
Oh.
It's really loud, shut it off. Or no? Oh, okay, that's a bad idea then. Okay.
So this is, this is sort of off topic and just food for thought, but with that field trip stuff, I wonder, rather than doing our little grant that we talked about, I wonder if we, if we did our donation to the field trip fund this year? Ponder it.
Looking at that, you know, the first ask was 11, current is four. I was even thinking of, you know, in the budget line, we could bump it up to like 6,500, kind of a little more and split the difference.
I was kind of thinking the same thing on that line.
So yeah, I mean, off the top, this is, this will take a little bit of time.
But I don't have a problem.
Digest. I'm sure there will be more questions. Next time around, do you guys have anything else off the top of your head? I mean, I think, so you need some direction, right?
Uh, yes.
Do we want to save for now to go ahead and put these cuts in the budget and we'll see what they look like? And then if we, you know, that's not set in stone for another month and a half. So if we, if we put this in, you know, we can always come back and change these particular lines.
Yeah, I thought it looked good and maybe put it in with the field trip line bumped up a little bit.
I'm good with that.
So maybe bump that field trip line up to 6,500.
I mean, when I say I'm good with that, I want to be real clear for anybody in the public who might be listening. I don't like this. You know, this is, this is us doing our best to try to keep things as low as we can, but there are definitely things on this list of cuts that I would rather not. But, you know, we're, we're in a world where inflation's eight and a half percent or so and things have to be done, but I don't like any of this. And I know the administration creating this certainly doesn't mean that they want to do it either.
So is there consensus on the board? What was the number to put in for field trips?
65, is that now you?
Yeah, I'm good with that too.
Okay.
Anything else on the cuts or trust funds or the budget document for this week or anything else before we move on? Good? Okay.
Okay. If you, Kathy put the class size policy in the drive for you and I think it's photocopied in the paperclip packet that I put in front of you. So the Pembroke School District does have a school board policy. It was approved in 2017 regarding class sizes. Keep in mind, this is your policy and it can be changed. I do, if everyone has a pen, I did look up the Department of Education numbers because I anticipated that question was coming. So the minimum standards for public education indicate that K2, you should have 25 students or less, but you should strive for 20. That's the language that they use. Grades three to five, 30 or less strive for 25. And middle and high school, 30 or fewer.
30 or fewer for the rest of the grades.
If you look at the enrollment sheet, I think that was in Amber's packet in the booklet toward the back. Kathy updates this every year and we always use the October numbers because that's when our official count is due to the Department of Education and that's what they use when they do adequacy and all of their budgeting. So that's the official number. It will change on a daily basis, but that's the point in time that we, so we compare apples to apples. She has the 1920 actual numbers. She has the 2021 actual numbers. As of October 2020, has the numbers of October 2021. And then in purple for next year, she simply takes each grade level and moves them up. So this is anticipating that the exact number of kids we have this year will be coming back next year. And then she takes the average number of kindergarten students over the past couple of years and we have no way of knowing what that number will be. So she is 62. We currently have 60 kindergarten students. And then on the far right, you'll see, next to the number of students, you see the number of staff we have for each grade and then we have the average class size in each of those grades. So you can work your way all the way down. It's not possible to do the number of staff and class sizes at Pembroke Academy because we have 200 classes, however, more maybe. So students are spread out all over the place at different times of the day. So there's no set class size. We've tried in the past to print off a report and it's a pretty large report. If you have specific questions, Dan can probably give you averages, you know, what a freshman math class would be versus maybe an AP class may have lower numbers of students in it. So it really just depends on the subject area.
Questions, comments?
So I guess just to be clear, so we all understand that's the same. When we say the average class size right now at PA is 18, you had stated that, you know, some classes could have 25 or more and other classes have four. So an average doesn't really tell the whole story of what's going on. And that's, that's true also with Three Rivers and Hill to a lesser extent.
Hill School is pretty accurate because it's elementary. And I think Three Rivers would be accurate too.
So average class size, just dividing staff by numbers doesn't tell you the whole story.
At the high school, sorry. Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
I mean, it's, I don't know how you guys feel. Looking at this policy, Patty gave us the DOE numbers. I also looked at schools around us and I should have written them down, so don't quote me. I believe it was Bo was, was a fair bit higher than us. I want to say they were like 20 in K through four and kind of stepped up from there. But other ones that I looked at, Hooks at Concord, I think Mary McValley was one, were very close to our numbers. I have, you know, I talked to a lot of the teachers. I can't imagine, especially at the Hill School level, having 25 kids in a class. I mean, that's, that is insane. So I feel very good about our policy. If you guys want to weigh in on that, I think, I think Ms. Bond had asked that this be put in the drive to look at, but if it's up to me, I, I wouldn't change that.
I know I'm brand new, but I wouldn't change it either in a global pandemic when there's kids that are still trying to catch up from being remote learning. I don't think it's smart to be changing the policy.
Agreed. With that said, does that cross my mind too? I mean, obviously, when you're looking at the far right column, there's a couple of grades right in the middle that kind of jump out as being pretty low. I know that TRS is a little tricky because some of those are subjects, right? You can't just, you know, if you remove a teacher at Hill, that's a general teacher. But if you remove somebody at TRS, that might be social studies. So that's kind of, I don't know. So I'm not sure what the level of flexibility is there. But, you know, obviously 13 is pretty low and 15 is pretty low for that level. But then to balance that, while I'm sure that would help us with the budget significantly, there's also, is this, is this the year to be doing that type of thing? That's, I think that's a big conversation.
John and I have actually had that conversation. You know, if you eliminated a teacher in sixth and seventh grade, it would mean combining reading and English Language Arts. So right now we have a teacher for each subject. And so far, on the survey that we sent out for the grant funding, the number one choice right now is supporting students with learning loss. So if we're going to respond to that and say, okay, that's what the community is asking us to do and then we cut one of the teachers that we have to potentially provide that support. We have grant funding, but I'm not sure that we would be able to use it for a position that they consider is supposed to be in our budget. So it's supposed to be to hire additional staff, not to cut staff and hire them with grant funds. So that's, John, do you want to add anything?
That's very accurate. We would, I think fifth grade, if you look at the fifth grade numbers, that is exactly what happened there. So we have four teachers. One person is doing the ELA, they call it RLA curriculum. And, you know, bumps those classes up to 19 pretty quick. If you look back two years, look at the sixth grade, it was at 68 kids. And a projection for eighth grade next year would be 81. So what I'm finding, we had about 40 new students this year and you can't predict if they're coming or going. We had about 40 new and I don't know how many left, it was right around a dozen. And that seems to be something that happens at Three Rivers. We get kids coming, moving in particularly in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. They're coming out of different places and they want, there's students to go to middle school, prepare for high school. That's an unknown, to be honest with you. We don't know, but we did get hit. I have never seen as many new kids that we got this year. But if we do cut one of those classes, that does bump your, obviously your class size up. But you, currently we offer basically a writing class and a reading class. And we wouldn't cut one of those. Because you can't cut the math teacher, you can't cut the science teacher.
Right.
So you'd have to cut one of those people. That's what we did in sixth and fifth grade a few years ago. And quite honestly, we were feeling it. I could show you numbers on our scores that we're doing that would indicate the issue with it.
Other thoughts on that? I think, I, I think I agree, Melanie. I don't feel like this is the right year to be removing any staff. I think the kids need everything they can get from us. I say us, I'm not doing the hard work. They need everything they can get from the schools. I guess I would be interested to see what that would look like. If one from each of those grades, what impact that would have on the budget, just so we have that information.
From, from Three Rivers?
From six and seven.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, I think exactly what John said, we would, we would have combined.
So what, as far as the budget goes, like what, what would that?
Okay, gotcha.
What would that get us?
Okay.
My guess is not enough to make it worth it this year. But this is very good and I think, I think that this is going to be very helpful. This is something that the Budget Committee asks a lot of questions about. And, you know, I think that there is a kind of general feeling that the count of students keeps declining, which this shows, at least in the fairly recent past, is not accurate and that our staff count has remained unchanged, which we can clearly see is also not accurate. So this will be helpful. Any questions on the policy or the enrollment chart?
I guess just a quick question. Do we have any certified staff that does not work daily with students? Aside from administrator.
We have staff that are not classroom teachers, but all of our staff work with students. So, you know, the librarian is not a classroom teacher, but she runs the library, sees students. The tech integrators work with staff and students. Do you have something in mind that you're wondering about?
Just know that, you know, I guess what I'm looking for maybe is a redundancy. If there's a redundancy anywhere, I don't have anything specific, but I didn't know if there was staff that was certified that didn't work daily with students.
Can you think of any building level folks?
Oh. Yeah. So it was just a question, I was just, you know, for like a redundancy or?
Yeah. Would it be helpful if we label the roster for you and where it says teacher Hill, we could put first grade teacher, third grade teacher, you know, we could go be more specific for you on the roster? Would that be helpful? Okay, we can do that.
Read it out by schools, but I think it would be helpful if we knew exactly what their.
Role that they write.
What their role is, yeah.
Yeah, because it's specific for like a music teacher, but all the rest just say teacher.
Right.
Sure.
And that would also go into budget if somebody's proposing, then we have, okay, this person is such and such.
Yep, we can do that.
Other questions around staffing, class sizes, that sort of thing? Okay, what else do we have for fun?
That's not enough. We have need for non-public for a couple of personnel matters and to talk further about increases that were in the budget. I think at this point, we're just looking to make sure that we're doing what you would like us to do in terms of budgeting and we have this list of 315,000 that we will have Amber put into the budget. Do you have at this point a bottom line in mind? You know, are you thinking, hey, you need to go back and find another X amount of dollars? Or do you want us to bring those two staff cuts and give you what, so that you know what that number would look like? Is there anything else you'd like us to do in the meantime?
So I have thoughts, but I'll let you guys go first.
If we're talking, if we're talking bottom line, I don't want to see this over 29. I'd like to see it, you know, I guess my look at it would be mid 28 with room. That's where I would feel most comfortable. And it's going to be, we have basically, the tax rate decreased because of the amount we gave back last year. So coming in the next year, there's going to be a substantial bump. So as small as we can make that bump, as small as we can make that bump, I think it would be benefit everybody. Trying, just trying to flatten out that up and down jagged line we've been running on for the past few years.
So for some context, and I just threw this through my phone calculator, so I could be wrong. But I think if you throw in, I put in 315 even, that got me to 28, 830, 447, and that would make the percent increase 4.3. It's actually 4.299. So that's kind of in that neighborhood. I mean, I'm, well, what else is left? I think the retirement numbers I thought were due tomorrow, right?
Yeah, so we, we put three salaries in there just as placeholders. The amounts may change a little bit, but we wanted to have a number in there so you could get a better sense of.
So it's possible that somebody making more money could retire and that number could go up a little bit, but, but that's ballpark pretty.
Generally, the people that are retiring are at the top of the scale. So the, and the only difference is going to be if it's a person with a master's degree versus a bachelor's degree and that's not a whole lot of money. So that should be a pretty close number.
And we've got health insurance, we've got, we've got the big stuff. Is there anything that's not in here that you can think that might have a significant impact between now and, you know, when we present to Budget Committee in the 16?
I think we've been through the entire budget. Amber went through it a couple of times. We tried to think of everything that was outstanding. We, you need to do your warrant articles. But other than that, I think the work of the budget is done.
So I guess I'm feeling like I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at. You know, 4.3 is not small, but it's honestly, it's one of the smaller ones that I've had to argue for since my time. But it's honestly, it's one of the smaller ones that I've had to argue for since my time on NBC. Um, also I, you know, I always try to put these things in context when I speak about this publicly. Again, I mean, we're, we're at a place where inflation is over 8%. I don't think it's reasonable, you know, to say oil has gone up, uh, electricity has gone up, everything has gone up. We've only bumped our staff, including our teachers, a couple of percent. It's not like we're handing out major pay raises. So to have our overall budget come in at, at basically half of inflation, while the number isn't warm and fuzzy, when you put it in context of what's going on in the rest of the world, to me, it, it's kind of a job well done, honestly. I was expecting when we first got the packet last week that said 5.4, I was honestly shocked. I, I thought I was going to see a 7% on there or something. Um, and we were going to have a ton of work to do. But I'm, I'm kind of okay with where we're at.
No, I'm thinking the same. I don't think, I'd like to see it lower, but I was thinking somewhere around four and a half or maybe a little lower. Um, so I was happy to see the number, but you can't get away, I mean, a family's spending $330 a week on groceries. Like there's going to be an increase and I'm sure not everybody is going to be happy, but that is the life we have right now. So it's kind of expected, I would think. You know, and we, we did have hard conversations as a leadership team and I want you to think that this budget represents the ideal. Um, you know, we, we need another foreign language teacher. We need another case manager at Pembroke Academy. Um, we need another case manager at Hill School. We did not add any staff to this. We need those positions, but we, you know, we, at the same time, you get the bottom line. Amber gives us the bottom line and we just, we couldn't do it in good conscience. We couldn't bring those to you. Um.
Right. And that's good stuff to know. And that's something, you know, I, I would like, you know, I don't know if you guys take notes when you have those, those slash sessions, but i- it, that's helpful context for me at NBC and, and talking to the public. Um, cause I think it's sometimes it's easy from the outside to, to not realize kind of how much work goes into this and how, how, you know, we're, when, especially when you're talking about staff, that's people, people that we work with every day. Um, they're not easy conversations. So I think as much as we can share with people about how these conversations went down and we're, how we got to the number that we're at is excellent. Also say, one of the things that I've asked Amber to do, and not immediately because she's underwater, um, but something that I thought would be a useful tool for the meeting this year is, and it struck me again, going through this. I went through every line in this budget the other night. And when you, when I do that, one of the things that jumps out to me every year is in a, you know, 28 million dollar budget, the number of lines that we have any wiggle room in, and by wiggle room, I mean, ability to control even, um, is miniscule. You know, I, I, and so I've asked Amber to eventually kind of codify every line and say, this is a contractual obligation. You know, whether that's the teacher's contract or a long-term energy contract or the printer maintenance thing that we already pay for, right? And that's, we can't touch those, at least not immediately. We can re-up a contract some other time, but today we can't do anything with that. And then there's the kind of formula driven things, right? Like a lot of the special ed stuff is we, we build a SAU on a need, as needed basis. Those numbers are in our budget from formulas that Amber has that are state approved. And again, that's not money we can do anything about. So really, you know, when we're looking at $28 million, I'm pulling this number out of the air, but there might be a couple million that, that we actually have any control over. And so I, I have asked her to kind of codify those lines into those three categories. So we can show a pie chart just so that people understand that because, I mean, it's a similar conversation to what we said about sports, right? Sure, we could save $200,000 if we eliminated every singles four. And I think people need to realize that to make, you know, a half million dollar change means big changes for, for how the school actually works. So anyway, that, that's one of the ways that I'm planning to present the data this year.
What did you say, Andy, that you got for a number? It's pretty close to what I was thinking, like four and a half?
4.3, it's 4.299, I think. But that, like I said, I did that real quick, so I could have, I stuck at typing. But yeah, somewhere in the ballpark. And I'll, I'll do a spreadsheet like I did last year. Um, last year I made a spreadsheet for the board that you could kind of just plug in a percentage and it would calculate out what the dollar amount would have to be and, or what it would look like if we did one, two, three and a half, whatever. So I'll draw one of those up just so that we have some reference points. I don't know, you know, obviously we've got a couple of board members not here, but it, it sounds like the, the consensus here tonight is that we're pretty close. Do appreciate the conversation on the buses. I think that's, that's big. Um, it's nice to know that we can cover that with less. Anything else? Um, you need anything else from us before we do non-public?
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Anything else anybody wants to share? Um, I should be able to remember the number, but I can't. Whole RSA thing. Okay, so I'll see if I can get this right. We have need to go into non-public session under New Hampshire RSA 91 dash two, call, 91 dash three. I can't, I need to think. I have a copy of it somewhere. Thank you. We have need to go into non-public session under New Hampshire RSA 91 dash eight colon three, Roman numeral two, small letters B and C. Um, small letter B is the hiring of any person as a public employee and C is matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Um, on a roll call vote to enter non-public at 717. Melanie?
Yes.
Jean? And M E S. So we'll take a minute, pause the Sorry about that, Carrie. Thanks for letting me know. A quick recap, since you couldn't hear, so that it's on the video record. Um, there was a motion to approve a staff leave request, um, that was denied unanimously. There was a motion to change our start time for these meetings back to 6:30 as it has been passed. That was approved. And we were just going through schedule of things happening soon. Our next meeting is 6:30 on the 7th of December. On the 8th, um, there's an AREA meeting and SAU exec board meeting scheduled back to back also right here. I think the first one starts at 5:30. And Ms. Sherman mentioned that the SAU exec board meeting may be canceled. Um, the 16th of December is our first SAU, or I'm sorry, Pembroke, um, presentation of the school budget through the municipal budget committee. And we'll have another school board meeting on the 21st. That'll be our last one until the new year. And I think with that said, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'll make motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, meeting's adjourned at 7:51 PM. Thanks, everybody.